On the meeting tour. Welcome, everybody. Just as a reminder with a health code reminder that while you're seated, you can remove your mask. However, if you get up to speak at the mic or go to the washroom, et cetera, you must have worn your mask at the time. Be resolved that the agenda for the January 28, 2021 meeting be accepted as presented. So please move that. Second, Secretary attached. All in favor? Here. Be resolved that Counsel Brett McGregor be excused from the special meeting of council due to a family member being tested for COVID-19. Saying please move that. Counsel Corey. Second with Counsel Harvage. All in favor? Be resolved that the special meeting of council be recessed to allow council to hold public hearings to receive representations from any person who wish to make them and respect your local improvement plan 012021 for the installation of fiber optics in the rural area. Please move that. Second with Counsel Simeon. All in favor? Here. Okay, this is a public hearing in regard to the fiber optics in rural homeowners. Anybody wishing to make their presentation, please come forward to the mic, state your name and address, and feel free to give us your presentation. Should be okay. I need to get that.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good evening, my name is Glenda Garden. I'm here to represent the Nesbit Community Club. And...
We have nothing back here. Can you just stand a little closer to me?
Can you hear me?
A little better.
Is that better?
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Glenda Garden and I'm here on behalf of the Nesbit Community Club. And so this is something that's written up to the council to be presented to. So, to the RM of Oakland, Wauwuniesa. I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Nesbit Community Club. The Community Club is for the betterment and growth for people and groups in the municipality. It understands that improvements such as the fiber optic internet is important for the growth of the community. The hall, the playground, and the soccer slash ball grounds is operated by unpaid volunteers of the community. The hall is a venue for hosting events and also uses an event for the fundraiser fundraisers strictly for the upkeep and maintenance of its building and the grounds. It has had fundraisers and received generous grants to help with the upgrading of the playground, which is for all to use and enjoy. So the costs of the board are that the Nesbit Community Club under the local improvement bylaw number 1, 2021 would have to bear a large expense. This levy of $1,142.80 is a lot of money for a nonprofit organization. Because of COVID-19, the hall and the grounds held no events last year and likely into this year as well. Yes, there have been grants to help offset the costs, and that is appreciated. So there have been plans for a while and talks to have roofing and building repairs done. So the increase in municipal taxes last year and now this threefold levy make it difficult to achieving those goals. So in effect, it is asking the unpaid volunteers who are already paying the levy for their own property to pay the three hall levies again under their own energy and time. So this will have to motivate the community club to apply for extra grant funds from the municipality in the next week. Thank you for your time and anticipated support. Sincerely, the Board of the Nesbit Community Club.
I guess maybe the first thing I'll mention that this is the fiber optic is going into residential. It isn't going into the hall as such. There wouldn't be any charge for the hall. It's for on residential lots. So it doesn't really apply to your, to the hall itself, to the big community club.
Okay, because that's not included on the, on the what's taken off for not paying in that levy. It's not included.
I'm not sure I understand.
Oh, no.
It's exempt.
It's exempt. Yes.
Right.
But we're still paying a fee.
But two, they pay like two properties.
Yeah, there are two properties. It's not on the hall and council has to take that into effect, of course, yes. But it's not on the hall itself.
Okay. Get that clarified. Yeah, don't kind of confuse.
So, sorry, the hall owns two residential lots, right? For the community club?
Well, they're taxed. They're taxed to the hall. That's a separate role. There's two residential lots, right?
There's a residential thing, which is exempt.
Right.
There's two institutional, but you know, that's what we're trying.
Right, so there are two institutionally. I know we're making, councils have got to make provision for those with the community club.
Okay. Thank you.
You for the comments?
Is there a point where we're just going to be able to ask questions about the whole thing without getting up and making a presentation?
You can come forward and ask questions. Sure.
Okay, I got some questions here. One of the questions is...
Name and address, please.
My name's John Robinson and I live Southwest of 32618, which is just outside of the RM of Oakland, Wauwuniesa. But I do own a half section just on the other side of the road, which isn't Oakland, Wauwuniesa. I have a question. I have a yard that's in the RM of Oakland, Wauwuniesa that is exempted from this levy. If I wanted fiber optic internet service, can I pay that levy to get the fiber line transferred to my yard?
That'll be a one off. Council would have to make that decision, John. But obviously, what the primary goal here is to for RF Now to get as many hooked up as possible. So if somebody wanted that, I can't see why we wouldn't make provision for it. How it would be charged out, that would have to be a council decision.
Okay. The other thing is, so you're going for this levy and you're just gonna, okay, it's on all the properties, right? I know there are some people who are, do you have residences in the RM? That they're kind of tied up on money right now with all this going on, right? So this is an extra charge for people who probably aren't asking for this. What gives the council the right to just dump this on people's taxes without their consent?
When you have a project like this, the ultimate job of council was to make sure that we get everybody covered for fiber optic cable to their homes. And we make the deal with the property, I mean, with the company that's coming in, there is a critical mass required for them to come in. And a lot of financial obligation from the municipality to bring the project forward. So that's why there's a cost involved to it. Now, we know that not everybody is going to want it. But in order to make the project be feasible, we have to put it every homeowner in your land or residential property in the municipality. If it's a case of here, if we have too many objections to it, we have to take that into consideration or we have to just make the decisions going forward after this public hearing.
Okay, I just bring that point up because it is kind of unonly municipality things that can do whatever the hell they want. But a lot of the land here was issued letters of patent by Queen Victoria's agents in the late 1880s. And if you actually look at the letters of patent, they declared that we're in the Northwest Territories, not in province of Manitoba. And they have some clear obligations that the Crown and their agents took on when they issued those letters of patent to landowners. And I don't see how municipality can just, hey, we're just gonna say, hey, you owe us this money or else we're gonna sell your land out for money. If I did that, that would be extortion.
Well, we don't do that. So we don't tell people they have to do it or else it's all gonna happen like that.
Isn't that what you're saying? That if this goes through, then people who are not going to get this service are then gonna be stuck with him or even only get no service?
All residential lots will be charged according to that tax levy.
Yeah, so that is my point proven, right?
It doesn't say, doesn't say that we're gonna sell it, but if they don't pay it.
Well, it doesn't say this, but you do have authority if there's liens the municipality can.
There is provision for all that sort of stuff. That it doesn't take one little tax that they're not paid for, it's a property sold, so. We don't do that, so.
Well, we just bring in a authority.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Norma Lent and my land inscription is Southeast 26719 West. Sorry, I have to read it off my driver's license every time. Some of the questions I have, some kind of go along with the previous speaker's questions. Number one is, is this a decision that's already been made? Or is this something that we actually have a say in?
It's not a decision that's already made.
Okay. So there are, I know it's not just myself because other people have voiced to me that this is not something they're ever going to utilize. I understand that, you know, everybody wants to see improvements in our area and that's great. But I'm just wondering why now with fiber optics, when maybe 10 years ago that would've been great. But why, like, are there any other options that you look into? Because there are other options out there. And I'm not sure if you're aware.
If you say other fiber optic?
Not fiber optic options, but other high-speed internet options that are less costly. They're not going to cost the RM 1.95 million. Such as, and I know there's a couple of companies out there. One of them that I'm more familiar with because I looked into it previous to this coming up is Starlink, which is a satellite-based internet service. It's right now being beta-tested in northern Manitoba and northern Ontario. There are over 900 satellites already up. This is a company that's owned by Elon Musk through SpaceX, I believe is what it's under. He also has Tesla and a few other, lots of maintenance companies besides that. And the total cost per residence is $699. This is after the beta test. If you're in on the beta test, it's less, but it's $699 for the setup and it's actually $10 a month cheaper than what RF Now is charging or says they're gonna charge. And nobody has to trench anything. It doesn't cost the RM any additional money on top of that. So I guess I'm just wondering why now we suddenly fiber optics, you want to put fiber optics in when there are all these other options? And that somebody who works in the industry has, not told me personally, but told a friend like who told me, that comparing fiber optics to the satellite, and I'm not talking like satellite like we have with Explorer Network, that's not satellite, that's just wireless. But with the satellite, it's like fiber optics is, or the satellite is like a rocket ship where fiber optics is like a horse and buggy in terms of speed and efficiency. And so I'm just wondering why fiber optics now, 10 years, like I said, if this had been 10 years ago, hey, that would've been a great thing. But there are just other options out there now that aren't as expensive, so.
Well, I guess the first thing I have to clarify, you mentioned $1.9 million is costing.
Isn't that what it said?
No, that's the cost of the project RF Now to the municipality is $200,000. That's what the municipality's involved in.
Okay.
$200,000.
Okay, so even still.
In fiber optic, I'll just explain how this came about. Last year at the public hearing for the budget of 2020, one of the rural residents came forward and said, long days to getting fiber optic, why aren't you doing something for the rural to get fiber optic? So that started the council thinking, why aren't we doing something for the rural to get fiber optic? Fiber optic is the optimum right now as far as connectivity. Nothing as far as the sky goes is gonna come down very quick.
Within this calendar year, actually.
Me?
Maybe, you know what? The, actually, the thinking at SpaceX, at Starlink at this point is that within this calendar year, within 2021, the majority of the world is going to be hooked up, so.
That's, whatever happens here, it happens. But in any case, that how this all came about? Fiber optic is the optimum right now. Once it's in the ground, it's gone to your house, you would have it for a long time. So it is the optimum as far as connectivity goes. When within COVID-19 result of this, of this last year, it was shown very much so that the rural do not have good connectivity.
Oh, I am totally aware that I live in the rural.
From learning to everyday-to-day operations. So this is very important as far as the council goes to do something for the rural so we can get that to every homeowner. Now, there is cost associated whenever you do this. And as I said, to get critical mass and issue, it's gonna cost money. In this case, $200,000 spread out to every rural resident, just residential property, not farmland. So that's why it came about in this fashion. So I accept what you're saying. You know, there's all these Starlink, there are these other things out there, not proven yet, but they're there. And I can tell you that we have a member of council who has RF Now right now in his home. At his operation as far as connectivity goes.
Okay, and I guess one other, one other concern I have, I guess, more than a question or a concern, is the lack of ability to get information both from RF Now and from the RM when I've tried to ask questions or when I've, I contacted RF Now. I called the RM office, nobody called me back. So, and when I contacted RF Now, first of all, apparently the information they gave me, they did give me was not correct. Because they told me that there would be a cost on top of the levy that's gonna be put on our tax bill, that there would be a cost to run from the trunk line to my home. That's what they told me. So I understand that that's been clarified. But other than that, like, I couldn't get any information other than just very, very general, basic information. I even tried rewording it and I took the responsibility of it, maybe I didn't word it correctly. So I tried to be more clear and still very roundabout, but no comment. And that concerns me, that a company that's, if they're only up enough, then why aren't they willing to provide information? So that's just a concern I have and I need to bring that forward.
We'll look forward to it.
So having said all that, we had already committed to, as much as we needed to at the time, to something, to start, for example. And that's why I have gained information about it, because that was something that we're looking into. And like I said, predated the RF Now by quite some time. So this is not something that we're ever going to use as far as our property. It's been in our family for 112 years, 114 years, I know, something like that, quite some time. It's not gonna change hands anytime soon. So this is no benefit to us. So, but we're still gonna take with it?
Well, let me put it another way. There is 130 homeowners or 130 ratepayers that are on provincial highways or provincial roads that don't get any, any use from graders and/or smoke piles because they get access 453, et cetera, or Highway number two or Highway number 10. They don't get discounted taxes because they don't want to use the graders route. This is on this critical mass.
But they don't pay for the maintenance that they get on those roads either outside of their provincial taxes. Where you're asking us to pay additional money for something that we're never gonna use.
Not necessarily. You yourself may not, but your neighbor may, so we did it under critical mass basis.
Yeah, well, I strongly disagree. I object.
And that's your, that's your earful.
So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, I'm Ted from Southwest 26718. We live right on the number two highway. And today I phoned RF Now to find out if there would be any charges to bring it from the highway into our property, and it's not very far. They assured me that they wouldn't. In the course of the conversation, when we asked some questions, he led me and he said, and Robert was listening, he said, tomorrow morning, I expect to have the paper on my desk saying it has been approved. If it's as quick as that, I go, oh, I thought we were coming to a meeting to discuss it. RF Now assumes he's getting it signed and sealed tonight and he gets the paperwork tomorrow. So really, I wonder on this. Can I ask, have you had any written objections?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Are you sure that all properties will get RF Now within our municipality if they request? And I'm thinking of Sean, who lives, what, four miles away from the number two?
About two quarters.
Are you sure you'll get it? If you were to phone and ask and say, RF Now, I want it in, at no cost to you other than the levy, are you sure you'll get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and...
Yeah, you're a couple of miles off.
In the proposed contract, there's holdbacks if they don't do it within the timeframe. And if they don't do it, they don't get paid, we'll make sure that it does happen.
And then do we get reimbursed? Or we, everybody still pays that levy. And as I say, this is not pertinent to us because we're not far off the number two. But I'm thinking of people who are. And there's probably people much further than yourself, Sean.
And that's the reason why we brought it to council.
Yes.
Was to get those people that are four and five miles, that would cost them $10,000 to get it.
Yes.
But yeah, everybody's helping subsidize everybody. And that's how it's, that's how we brought it to this, to this meeting and that's what we're proposing tonight.
I asked the young man in RF Now today, was he sure that everyone would get it? I didn't get an answer. And then this afternoon, I was talking to a friend who lives two miles west of Suris. They're off the number two highway. They're probably two, two and a half miles of it. They have a business, they have a family home. And they have looked into getting RF Now. And they've been told, no, it's too far.
Because they don't have a trunk line probably close.
Does that go to apply to people in our municipality?
No, because under the, under the plan as of right now, they have trunk lines to go through to accommodate everybody in the plan. And that is, that's why we're here, that's why they were asking for $200,000. And so they have commitment from this RM and these people in this RM that, that they can put these trunk lines in and people are actually gonna use it. They're no different than any other business. If they don't have commitment, they're not gonna do it. No different than your farm or any other business. Right?
May I add just one to that? Also, they've, they've, they've told us that they will, and it's wrote in the contract, if this goes through, that they, if you decide now not to hook up somebody in the rule, they, you have seven years, they would have seven years to make up their mind to hook up for no additional hookup.
Uh huh, yes.
And that's in, wrote in the contract also.
Yes. I read their point number three, that they will be responsible for just three years of client service contracts and they guarantee a set rate, service rate for three years. Do we know what's gonna happen after those three years?
Well, they could increase your costs. Maybe, maybe their costs will go up, it'll go up to 140. It's no different what you have now between telephone and cell service and everything else. Those costs could go up for them, so they might, but they guarantee those that price for three years.
What were you quoted for your hookup off the number two highway?
They told me nothing, because that's what it says here.
No, no, if we didn't have this program.
Oh, what we were talking, you know, that the fact that they're putting it along there in the trunk of our...
It would've been a standard probably $799 fee just to come into your yard then.
Yeah. That's exactly what it is. I phoned before we went looking at RF Now as a municipality. And for the first 500 meters, it was $799 per household. And then there was an additional charge for every 500 meters thereafter. So if you were one of the lucky ones that were within 500 meters, it was gonna be 799. I know of some in the municipality that have it and have paid for it themselves, have paid up to $2,700 for private hookup with RF Now based on the distance that it had to be brought in from the main trunk line.
Can you explain a little bit about how it has gone in Wauwuniesa?
I'm sorry, what?
Is Wauwuniesa Village on fiber optic?
Yes.
How is that being?
It's very good. It's been, it's been very good as far as having the people that are working from home now with the mutual being shut down for COVID. And people learning from home as far as school away over those, through the time period. It allowed them to do all of that. So it's, I hadn't heard one bad thing about fiber optic in the village.
And who put that in? Is that the same company?
Westman Communications.
Okay.
And Westman Communications would not come into Wauwuniesa without a $50,000 commitment from, from the town.
Okay, so that's why their rate is different from the rural rate there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a condensed area, it's much different setup than what you have for the rural, so.
Yeah, they're not, they're not really getting wire miles and miles there.
Okay. All right, thank you, officer.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Neil Ball, Paul, we're in Duking. Apparently, we have this optic in our house. We paid, like you said, $800. We had excellent service. We had good, what do you call, community fiber signal? Because we had Explorer Net and that set, they used to die on us. Especially on a stormy day or anything like that, it'd just kill us. Like, we'd just lose all our signal. And a neighbor of mine, just a native of Ottawa, he's west of me, he was trying to get the fiber optics at the same time I was. But he changed his mind and said, no, wait. Then next, this year, when he retired, he thought, well, he better have it because he's doing some work on Winnipeg. So he got it, he still, he still had to pay $800. Didn't have to pay any extra fees. I talked to a friend of mine, he's current lawyer, who has this fiber optic. He thought he wouldn't take it. Then he decided after a couple of years, it's a good idea because everything's going faster. Found out he had to come up with 1,200 bucks to pay for it. Now, we're in a good package deal here, which to me is unbelievable, that you can get a package deal that's good. Like, I'm, I'm, I might not be the most expensive guy to spend money, but I'm not the cheapest. But when it comes to a good deal like this, I think we should jump on it. Because it is, eventually in the services, in the future, we're gonna need it. Everything's gonna be this optical thing, and I just really support this program. And another question I ask, I've got a ten acre lot. If I buy the package now, apparently I've got seven years, what's the fiber optic in?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
As long as it's a residential lot.
No, you will not get it hooked to your house unless you sign up for it.
Right.
No, but if he builds, there's no lot, no house on it? If he builds and sets within the company?
It's seven years, yes, if you would get it.
Yeah, if I buy the package now.
Well, you can't.
You wouldn't buy the package, it'd just be on taxation.
So whenever you decided to build a house there, within seven years, they will trench it to your house.
Right.
Yeah, but you don't have to buy.
No, I paid the levy and everything else.
Yeah, the levy.
To me, that's buying the package, I'll pay the levy, okay?
Yeah.
Unless my English is wrong again, I'm just...
The other side of that is if you're $800 you paid, you'll get that refunded back to you by RF Now within the first year.
Yeah. Which is, which we're probably gonna talk about with the wife and I, because we wanted to do this other package. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Kirby Clark, Southwest 33818. So I've been in the telecommunications business for about 20 years. And I retired three years ago, so I don't have a dog in this fight. What I've said, I used to compete with RF Now. They also have a wireless internet. They also have a wireless internet faction of their business. But I have said from day one to anyone who asks, if you can get fiber, get it. Get it. Even though I wasn't providing it or had any ability to provide it. Fiber is the best technology available. And that includes, by the way, the new SpaceX Starlink program, which by the way, is a low orbiting satellite. A series of satellites, as the previous speaker mentioned. They've launched about 900 satellites to date. They just launched an additional 145 this month, actually, from Cape Canaveral, Florida. And what a satellite does, for those who are interested, it is nothing more than a mirror. A satellite just simply bounces the signal that is sent from the ground to that satellite and then back to your home. The technology is sound, it works. The reason that it's low orbiting, and the reason that there need to be thousands of them in order to cover the world, which is what Elon Musk is attempting to do, is that it is only 200 miles away from Earth. So there's no real time lapse to get the signal to that satellite and back to Earth. The satellite service that's available today is in a geosynchronous orbit of Earth, which is 22,300 miles away. Radio waves travel at speed of light. But still, 22,300 miles there and back, do the math, is about a half a second. So satellite technology isn't optimal in today's world. Fiber is glass. The delay, called latency in our world, is imperceptible with fiber optics. As I understand this deal, the community, RM, is obligated to pay $200,000. So every resident in Oakland, Lomenisa, can get fiber dragged to their home at no cost if they subscribe to their service and pay the monthly subscription fee of 134 some dollars. Now, $134 is a, is a chunk of change. It's enough. There are competitive services out there for half the price. So that cannot be discounted. I think 134 is frankly, a little bit rich. But it is 100 megs up and 100 megs down, symmetrical service, which to me certainly justifies that price. Every other service, satellite included, low orbiting or otherwise, will not be symmetrical. Means that download will be fast, upload will not. And it is upload that we all struggle with today. You can get 25 megs down, but if you want to get two or three megabits up, which is typical, you'll notice it. Symmetrical service is beautiful. Fiber is beautiful. So for a levy of $300, we can each pay over 100, just $100 a year for three years, is a great, great deal. And I'm here to congratulate you on the efforts that you have undertaken to get a company that is prepared to drag fiber to our homes under that kind of deal. We know that if, without this program, anybody who did want it is going to pay a minimum, we just said it, of $800 to get it into their home. Then they have to pay the subscription fee. What I don't understand, but it's really not up to us to figure it, but sadly, is that if the basic charge is $800 and it goes up from there, how can they justify doing it for anybody who asks for the 300 bucks that we're talking about? That math doesn't compute in, in my head. But that is the deal that they're offering. If you can hold them to the contract, and I'm sure you will, then I think this is a great opportunity for our residents. And despite the fact that I'm not a big fan of the company, which is not relevant with this conversation, then I fully support and endorse the activities. I think it's great and I look forward to getting hooked up.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hey, good evening, Chad Alon, Southeast 36817, the extreme northeast corner of the, of the RM. A lot of the points I was going to raise are already covered, so just a couple of questions then. So it says the monthly cost is $139 for residential service. Do you know if there's other costs that they're going to add on to it? So as an example, I have a NetSec. And for a fraction of the ability, I'm paying, my internet cost is only $70. But by the time they add on all the extra access fees and, and surcharges and stuff, it's almost $130. So do you know if there's any, any of those?
The only thing, the extra charges they're talking about is going to be routers, if you want a router in your home for Wi-Fi. But that's just always being, you can put your own router in as to...
It's, it's the access fees that, that are always like the hidden costs.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, the, the only other fees, you can have a $165 fee for equipment to go in. Their equipment to the, their equipment tied into their...
The router.
Yeah, well, it's like, you, you own your own router. It's a, maybe 165 is for the phone modem, I could be wrong there, but...
It doesn't mention anything goes out on the...
You can, you can get their phone service on this system too, for 20 bucks.
Okay.
300 megabytes for download and 68 upload speeds, great to date.
On which?
On their system. I did a speed test for it, Ken.
Okay.
Your, your equipment you have in your house, did you buy that yourself or...?
Yep, everybody has to buy their own router.
Router, yeah.
Would you have that now?
Yep, that's right, yep. No, I just, I just curious, because like I said, that's one of the always add-on, add-on fees that get you. And so similar to the comment that was just made about the, the upload speed, we noticed that now, working from home all the time, doing routines or whatever platform you want to use, you can get the information in, in well enough, but no one can see you because you can't upload fast, especially you've got kids in school on it and two of us working from home and so on. So, I, again, I think 100 up, 100 down is for essentially the same price that I'm paying for NetSec, where I get 15 down, if I'm lucky, and, and two on a good day up, if there's someone else in the house. So, again, that's, that's, I think, an excellent deal. And I just want to clarify, so that's, the rates, the levy is 380 per continuous chunk that you own?
For, for every residential property, it can be 380, it's going to be taxed, but we're going to split it into three years, so you don't have to pay that cost.
Yeah, if you want it that way, that's fine. So, and that's regardless of whether you're two acres or 200 acres?
Doesn't matter.
Do you know the, like, it's mentioned, you mentioned three, three trunk lines. What, what are those roots?
Well, and I don't know the exact root, what they're going to do, but the, the trunk lines go around basically perimeter and they're going to go up to those. But the, I think if you look at the meeting from last council meeting, he talked about the first line, the first trunk that they really want to get in is right around here.
At the start?
Right around, right around number two highway and up 340. That's a major trunk line they want to do right, right off the start. But they're, they're committing it to us. As of last meeting, he said they may be able to do everybody in the first year if we approve it. But we're hoping, actually, if we get that in the first year this year, I'd be really happy with that. It's a major project.
Absolutely. My sister's in Cornwall, she's up in Srees Woods, Srees Woods, and they're, yet, if they wanted to go with it, it was not even the length of this hall, it was a 700 bucks. And, so I just, I'm just curious if these perhaps are coming down from there, down to 340 and... It's better for me, but...
Well, they have, they're already into the municipality in the, in the northeast, northwest place, this area, with their trunk lines. So this is not a hard thing for them to get, according to them. So, we're looking forward to it, I think it's going to be, it could be a great thing for us.
I agree. And just, just a point, you know, for those that say, well, I'll never use it. I don't, I want Harley's healthcare system and I pay $200,000 a year towards it in my taxes, so...
I'll maybe just add, I'll just add to that, they, they also told us, if, if they can buy your property and you don't decide to hook up, they'll put a, a box at the end of the, the hub.
Right, next one?
Good.
Could I just clarify? Most recent mapping that they had done, it looks as if they'll be able to accomplish two thirds within the first summer or the first year, and then the additional third would have to be decided.
Any further?
Here.
Yes?
I just figured I'd add, as someone who kind of like Mr. Clark is in the technology industry or has been, someone brought up about how, I think it was Mr. Clark, how are they doing it for $200,000? I will tell you that the cost of running the fiber lines is a hell of a lot more than what they're saying their costs are and what the municipality would cost. I'm sure, as Mr. Clark is aware, there are quite substantial federal subsidies for providing rural internet service. I suspect that's where RF Now is going to make up the difference. The service that RF Now is offering, those lines from my professional experience with other clients, are capable of full gigabit internet service. So, it is pretty impressive that, yeah, they're right, that RF Now is willing to do this. The long-term sustainability of all the communities and possibly life out here for other than probably hermits like me, is going to depend on some sort of internet connectivity. Fiber optics have been around for a long time. And the internet speeds that RF Now is proposing is chump change to what fiber optics really can do. Back in 19, 1999, when I worked for Westman Communications Group, fiber optic technology really hasn't changed much in the last 30 years, except the price. We were getting like six, 700 megabits a second, and this is 30 years ago now. This service from my other customers has been pretty much 100% reliable, fast, no slowdowns. I will admit that customers that have the services they're proposing, I have seen some service slow down since COVID-19, but they're still providing like 90% of their advertised capacity, which is much better than I can say for Explorer Net. And, but I just want to say, it is a good, a good deal. I do approve it, I'm hoping you guys do, because if it only cost me 10 grand to trench fiber optic lines to my place in Prairie Lakes, so be it, it's a business expense. But I just figured I'd add that, it is a sound technology. There is no satellite service that is going to compete with fiber. Fiber optic lines are not going to corrode and deteriorate like copper lines that were put in for telephone and dial-up internet service. So, as I said, I'm just putting it forward, I disagree with the, probably the method that it's going about, but I do approve of the project and for the cost, as I said, I'm hoping you guys approve it. And I'm actually hoping you will allow landowners with yard sites that are not covered to pay into this levy, so we can get lines trenched there for possible perky trees. So, as I said, I'd like an answer to that, if that's possible, and not RF Now is kind of vague on that. But it is a superior technology and it is the way to go. And unless you can talk Westman Communications Group into doing this in the future, if this doesn't pass, I don't see any other company even touching this, with a 10-foot large bolt. Thank you.
Any further? If not, whereas all representatives, however, as evidence, well, whereas all representatives in regard to local improvement plan, O1 2021, for fiber optic installation in rural areas are dealt with, therefore be it resolved that this public hearing now be concluded. So you please move that. Counselor Corey, secondary. Counselor McDonald, all in favor? Carry. Okay. Therefore be it resolved that this public hearing now be concluded. Somebody please move that. Mr. Hatch, second, Counselor Corey, all in favor? So under bylaws, local improvement plan be resolved that bylaw number O1 2021 being a local improvement plan for the installation of fiber optics in the rural area be read a first time. Somebody please move that. Counselor McDonald, second, Counselor Suya, there's no discussion on this, all in favor? Carry. Be it resolved that property owners with more than one residential property located in the rural area not currently listed for sale or development, be charged a local improvement levy at, levy at a maximum of two properties, whereby the required adjustment will be done annually via a journal entry. Somebody please move that. Counselor Hart, second, by Counselor Corey, discussion? All in favor? Be it resolved that this meeting now, is now adjourned, somebody please move that. Mr. Hatch, second, by Counselor McDonald, all in favor? I just want to make a point here, that going away from this meeting, that first reading does not put it into action. This, all these special levies have to be approved by the municipal relations office. We do not approve this with a first reading, it takes three readings. But we not, cannot carry on to the second reading until this is done through public relations. Our municipal relations, correct?
Municipal board.
Municipal board, sorry. So just to, calm fears that just because it made a first reading doesn't mean that it's more that RF Now's going to say that they're doing work, they're not, it's not approved.